I'd like to welcome everyone to the monthly meeting of the TISD Board of Trustees. Our meeting was previously called to order and a notice of this meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. We are now coming back from executive session and first thing I believe we will do is our prayer and pledge of allegiance with Dr. Nation's going to lead us in that. If everybody could please stand.
Our Father, we first want to acknowledge your presence and thank you for being here with us this evening. We know that you're always present, but it's up to us to rely on you in that presence. Lord, we're here to discuss and make decisions that affect all stakeholders in Tyler Independent School District. We know that members of the board share the common responsibility and desire to come to conclusions and act upon them in a manner that is in the best interest of all the students in our district. It's a solemn honor and privilege to do so. Lord, watch over each person in this room that we will all feel the spirit of shared vision and see the actions of this board as an effort to meet the needs of each and every student while honoring the efforts of those students as well as the adults who serve them. Lord, we're thankful that you've sent such a qualified and caring individuals to this district. In David's words, and is quoted by the new President of the United States, "Behold how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity." Lord, we desire to work together in unity, assured that our focus is truly on equipping the students in TISD with an education that will allow them to positively contribute to our city, our state, and our country, and to reap the benefits of living in a society that seeks to educate all students. Please show us your will, watch over us, and guide us. I pray in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Now the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Dr. Nation, for the wonderful prayer. We next have a few personnel items from executive session. Roman numeral one is the Executive Director of Student Services. I believe we have a resignation/retirement there.
Yes, we have Ken Vaughn, Executive Director of Student Services. Ken was -- we're proud of Ken, Mr. Vaughn. He's been -- he was named Superintendent of Schools for the Piney Woods Community School in Lufkin. It's a school district, charter school district of about 1,100 students. So, very proud that Ken was able to advance himself. Hate to lose him, but at the same time, very encouraged that his leadership's going to be able to affect more kids.
All right, if we can get a motion on that item.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the resignation of Executive Director of Student Services, Mr. Ken Vaughn.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. Second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Washington, any discussion? I'd like to thank Ken for his years of service here. Appreciate the work he's done and good luck down in Lufkin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that's accepted. Next, we move to Director of Fine Arts.
Yeah, I think some of y'all might have more to say about this, but the velvet voice of Tyler ISD has decided he's going to retire. Hate to lose Mr. Faber, but certainly wish him well in retirement. I believe his wife retired last year and hope that they're going to enjoy their lives together after two great careers, influenced a lot of kids in Tyler, Texas. Hate to see him leave, but at the same time, it's his right. He's earned it to reap the benefits of being a public educator for as long as he has.
All right, thank you. Let's get a motion on that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the resignation and retirement of Mr. George Faber.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion on this retirement? Yeah?
He's not here, is he? Mr. Faber and I go way back, and when I first started teaching at Hubbard, Mr. Faber was there. And so, to me, TISD is going to be a little bit different without Mr. Faber. He's always been a very able person in every capacity that he's worked, and I really love Mr. Faber and with regret, so say goodbye.
Okay.
I too talked with Mr. Faber at Hubbard and also Dr. Hanson. We're going to miss him. He's in the community. Everybody in the community knows him very well, and Tyler will be, won't be the same as far as the music goes in our TISD. So, we wish him well, he and his wife also.
I believe after a long noteworthy career of so many great leadership skills and the love for students, at the end of a career, a person has that blessed opportunity to close that chapter, and all you're doing is starting to write another. So, in this book of George Faber, he's just closing one epilogue and going on to another chapter in the seat of Tyler, I believe. Because knowing George, he's not going to sit down. He'll continue to serve. Thank you, sir.
All right. Anybody else? All right. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that's accepted. Lastly, we have Director of Instructional Alternative Programs. Dr. Crawford?
Yeah, you know, this young lady, anytime she graduates her students at BoShear's, she has a little of the same issue that I have sometimes when I talk about how great some of our kids and our staff are. Denise Johnson, you've done a great job, and certainly we love you for that, and you're going to be missed. We expect you to continue to come around, enjoy your retirement, but we still want you around because you do have a great heart for the kids of Tyler, Texas. And I know it says Director of Instructional Alternative Programs, but there's nothing better than being called the principal of a school. You are the principals of BoShear's. So, great career, and certainly appreciate the heart that you have for the students at BoShear's, and it's heartfelt and it's well received across that entire campus.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. If we can get a motion on Ms. Johnson?
I move that we accept the resignation.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All right, any discussion?
I'll say this, BoShear's is like my favorite school. I love going over there, and I wish I could get over there more. And ever since the, you know, first year I was on the board, that graduation, I hadn't missed one, and I hope we can get you back for a few teary speeches in the future, because I know you know those kids well enough to attend, you know? And such a special place, and it takes such a special heart to be there, and that heart will be missed around here. So, good luck in all your future endeavors, Denise.
And I'll just say thank you for all the years you've put in and the smile that you've had every time you went to do your job. That's a neat trait and such a special place, so thank you.
Thanks for retiring on a night of trustee appreciation night, y'all. Goodness. We love you. Great career, hate to lose y'all.
All right, let's see, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that retirement is accepted. Okay, so we'll move on to special recognitions. Ms. Parnell's got, guess we're here for a little while? Yeah, all right.
Good evening, Board members. Tonight, we'd like to begin our recognitions by announcing our Two District Students of the Month for January. We would like to recognize Kevin Crawford, a fourth grade student at Ramey Elementary School, as the Elementary Student of the Month. Our Secondary Student of the Month is Lizbeth Belles Yanez, an eighth grade student at Bolter Middle School. Congratulations to both of these students, and at this time, we'll watch a brief video on their outstanding contributions.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our Two District Students of the Month. These students are selected based on six criteria: academic performance, effort, character, behavior, citizenship, and attendance. We would like to recognize Kevin Crawford, a fourth grade student at Ramey Elementary, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Kevin was nominated by his principal, Ms. Tremaina Thomas, for his hard work and effort. He says his favorite class is math.
Because I think it's just my favorite subject. The questions are easy, and when he tells us to do our work, I'm the first one done.
Kevin wants to be a psychologist when he grows up because he likes to help people. He has advice for other students who want to be Student of the Month.
Get good grades and perfect attendance on a roll.
Our Secondary Student of the Month is Lizbeth Belles Yanez, an eighth grade student at Bolter Middle School. She participates in many activities, including National Junior Honor Society, Vice President of Student Council, and an avid student. She says being a Bolter Viking is special.
It's given me many opportunities, such as avid. It's helping me learn more about college, getting me prepared, informing me more what I need to do, what I'm going to need to work on.
Lizbeth is planning her future. She's been researching colleges and career opportunities.
I plan on going to college. I still don't have my mindset on something. I have it open to various things, but I'm leaning towards the medical fields, health science, specializing in medical fields. I know for a fact that I want to be a type of doctor. I'm still researching different doctors, which will benefit me more, which will suit me more.
Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and leadership in the classroom. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD TV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Frances Health System. And Board members, I'd like to introduce you to Kevin Crawford, our Elementary Student of the Month. Congratulations again to both of these students. At this time, Board, we would like to introduce our Teacher of the Month, and it's Ms. Barbara Eubanks, and she's a fifth grade teacher at Griffin Elementary School. So, congratulations to Ms. Eubanks for being our January Teacher of the Month. First grade, I'm so sorry, first grade. And Board members, at this time, I'd like to ask you to go ahead and be seated, please. As you know, January is School Board Appreciation Month, and this is our time to thank you and to honor you and recognize you for the countless hours of service that you provide to Tyler ISD students and staff, and so we're so appreciative of that. Our theme this year is All-Star Team, and so tonight, I've invited a couple of All-Star employees to make some comments in your honor, and I would like to introduce Ms. Leann Lewis. Please come forward. She's a kindergarten teacher at Jack Elementary School. And Ms. Vanessa Holmes, Principal at Dogan Middle School, to make some remarks.
Good evening. On behalf of Tyler ISD, we want to thank you for your continued dedication to making our future your priority. Each of you hold the qualities of All-Star leaders in that you tirelessly put the well-being and futures of others before yourselves. The teachers, students, and parents of Tyler ISD are so very grateful to all of you. Please take a moment to view a special video that shows how much Tyler ISD supports and thanks all of you so much.
For decades now, the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees has instilled the traditions of excellence in the operations of the Tyler Independent School District. These folks got marks by donating countless hours to help Tyler ISD be recognized as a premier school district. Our hats are off to you. The starting lineup for this year's Board of Trustees are: our Wade Washman, District One; Reverend Orenthia Mason, District Two; Jean Washington, District Three; Dr. Patricia Nation, Vice President; District Four; Erin D. Martinez; District Five; Reverend Fritz Hager Jr.; District Six; and Andy Bergfeld, President; District Seven. Thanks to you, Tyler ISD Board of Trustees, for another swell year. You've knocked it out of the park.
I'm honored to express appreciation to you today for your service on the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees. We appreciate your generous sharing of time and energy on behalf of our children and our communities. You are without a doubt an all-star team focused on our schools. We are proud to have you as our leadership and the driving force behind Tyler ISD. It is now our pleasure to present each of you with a special gift of appreciation. As I call your name, if you would please stand, and after you receive your applause, you can be seated. President Andy Bergfeld, he represents District Seven. Mr. Bergfeld says what he values most about serving on the Board of Trustees is having the opportunity to serve others and help people. Vice President Dr. Patricia Nation represents District Four. She says what she values most about serving on the Board of Trustees is having the opportunity to positively affect the lives of children, teachers, and staff of Tyler ISD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wade Washman represents District One. He says what he values most about serving on the Board of Trustees is having the opportunity to serve the community he grew up in and cares so much about. Reverend Orenthia Mason represents District Two. She says what she values most about serving as a trustee is making a positive impact in the lives of students and staff. She also enjoys working with others to create safe and encouraging learning environments for all students. Jean Washington represents District Three. Since Ms. Washington is a former educator, she says what she values most about being a trustee is learning more about the district and working so closely with her fellow Board members. Thank you, Ms. Washington. Erin Martinez represents District Five. He says what he values most about serving on the Board of Trustees is being a voice for children, supporting teachers, being an advocate for public education, and championing Tyler ISD, and working as a team with Dr. Crawford and the other trustees to strive for excellence. Thank you. Last but certainly not least, Reverend Fritz Hager Jr. represents District Six. Reverend Hager says what he values most about serving on the Board of Trustees is working with people from diverse backgrounds who are united by a common love of children and the desire to improve the quality of education offered to all children. Again, we thank you all for your dedication and your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate the kind words.
That concludes our recognitions. Thank you again.
Okay, we've got a few minutes to approve. Looks like three dates there. If we can get a motion on those three.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes for December the 12th, December the 15th, and December the 19th.
Is there a second?
A second? Oops, sorry.
All right. If there's no changes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Those minutes are approved. All right, we go to an action item on the presentation of the audit, page 17.
Mr. President, as representatives from Prothrow Wilhelmie come to the podium to present the annual audit, or actually to the table to present, proud to provide this state mandated function to the Board in a review of the school district and its finances, among other things. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Dr. Crawford.
Hi, my name's Bob Roseman with Prothrow Wilhelmie and Company, and again, it is indeed a pleasure to come before you and report on this year's audit of the financial statements and the operations of the school district, and we enjoy this process. It is indeed one which is important and required, but it is also one that we enjoy doing because we're citizens of this community, and we enjoy having an active role in the assurance that the financial operations of the district are in order, are in good shape. We certainly want to express our appreciation to the school district, especially the personnel that were directly involved in assisting us, and for their hospitality and the cooperation that was extended this year, and we do appreciate that. We enjoy a great relationship with Tasha Bjork and the Finance Department. They are very professional in the way in which they conduct their jobs, and it assists us in a, you know, a very good manner for us to get through our work in an efficient and timely manner. We also appreciate Jan Coker and the Audit Committee and the professionalism they have extended to us, and when we meet and go over further detail of our audit report, it's good dialogue, good conversation, and we enjoy that, and that's an important function for the district, and we appreciate that. One other thing I'd mention along those lines is we noticed a seamless transition this year and an important transition of personnel, and that is with the Executive Director of Financial Services, Ms. Mary Russell has come in and just seamlessly taken over that responsibility, and it's an important role, critically important, not only to the district financial operations, but it's the person with whom we interact the greatest amount during the course of our audit, and it was very seamless and very good. We appreciate that. And most importantly, we are here to report to you that we have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for the district, and that is not to be taken lightly. It's not always the case, and your financial operations are in good shape, good positive increases in your overall net position and in the general fund, and that's a good, healthy thing to see and one which we feel good to report to you. In addition, we have a couple of other reports to give to you, and I want my colleague, Mr. Ramsey Starks, who's assisted on this audit from the beginning with us, and he will do that at this time.
Thank you, Bob. As Bob indicated, we have issued two additional audit reports. The first one is the Independent Auditor's Report on Compliance as it relates to government auditing standards. And basically, what this report represents is if the district had any significant findings that we were required to report to you, that could, they labeled them as material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. If they arose to that level, which are things that you all would have to take action on or provide responses to, we'd be required to present those. We are pleased to report that we did not have any such findings. We also issued an Independent Auditor's Report on Compliance as it relates to the single audit. The single audit is used to be called the Office of Management Budget A133, which is the old rules. The new guidance now is called the Uniform Guidance. Just so you know, the biggest change in this really relates to the level of funding that you have to expend in order to have a single audit. Obviously, this does not impact Tyler very much because we're well over the threshold, but just for your records, it was $500,000, now it's $750,000. But again, we're, the only thing that changes here really is just the name and maybe a few other requirements. In our process of evaluating the different risks to the district and looking at what we had previously audited this year, we audited as major programs, Title I Part A, and we picked up a smaller program, which was the Career and Technology Grant. In accordance to what our guidelines specified, we did not have any such findings that we're required to report to you all as it relates to the single audit under the new Uniform Guidance. As Bob mentioned, this is a great honor and privilege for us to be able to partner with you all to provide these services, and we are greatly honored to be a part, to be able to serve Tyler in this role. At this time, do you have any questions that we would like for us to answer?
Okay, Board members, any questions on their findings?
I don't have any questions, but I will say, being on the Audit Committee and being able to work with your team is always a pleasure. These guys are instructed to leave no stone unturned when they're auditing us. We want to know our weaknesses, and we want to know where the risks are, and we appreciate all the data that you pour through, and in the spirit of the whole all-star team theme, I mean, these guys have to work with a lot of people at district level, and everybody works together as a team, and I can also say that, you know, with the addition of a new team member this year, some of they kind of had to step up and perform and make it seamless, and they did. So, and have to work with Jan, our internal audit services. But anyway, we just want to thank you. Thank you for doing a good job. Thank you for scrutinizing everything that you do, and thank Tasha and the whole team for keeping us safe and doing a good job with our money and the public's money, more importantly.
I'm sorry I missed the committee meeting. I was in the bed with the flu, and my mind was on getting better. I want you to know what a joy it has been for many years for us in the district to work with you. We're very proud of our employees and for the work that they do. We're very proud of our employees and for the work that they do in our financial department, and we just know that from this time forth, we'll continue to do the great work that we're doing. I hope the citizens are happy with the fact of how we spend the money, how we stay on top of the funding, and we do what is necessary, and we're thankful to our citizens because they continue to support us and invest in the lives of our students. So thank you, thank you, Jan, thank you, Tasha, and your staff, and we hope that you'll continue to deliver this great report. Thank you.
Okay, this does require action by the board. Does anyone else have any other comments? We do thank you for the professional job that you do, and we, we trust you guys completely, and we just appreciate that. You're a part of keeping us on track, and we thank you for it. All right, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the audit as presented.
All right, Dr. Nation, second?
Second.
Dr. Washman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
All right, move on. No one signed up for public participation tonight, so we will move to our Continuous Improvement Student Outcome section.
Normally, we'd have this at the front, but because we had presentations tonight, we also have the audit. We want to be respectful of their time, but certainly, it's something that has taken up another item of our board agenda compared to what it used to not, and certainly, we have three things tonight to talk about. Benchmark progress monitoring, it's our commitment to be transparent about the data that we're having as far as the assessment, the formative assessment of our performance ongoing, and not just waiting until the end of the year to talk about some of that data. We also have an A-through-F accountability presentation for us to help you, or help the public maybe start understanding what the A-through-F ratings, these projected ratings, these experimental ratings look like now and what they may could be later. And then we have a little bit of Lone Star Governance Maintenance that we need to do as well. So Continuous Improvement Student Outcomes. At the table, we have Executive Director of, what is it? School Improvement. Your title this year. Johnny DeMarden, and Chief Administrative Officer for Area One, Dr. Kristi Hansen, that'll conduct the presentation. Ladies?
Okay, I'll start with the benchmark, benchmark data. Our assessment plan involves two large benchmarks. One happens in December before we leave for Christmas break, and the other benchmark happens closer to when the STAR test actually occurs. It's important to know that the benchmark only covers content that the students have been taught according to the scope and sequence, so it's not cumulative for the entire year. And then what we do is we analyze that data and we move forward. So we wanted you to have the information about the first benchmark. Again, this benchmark was taken before Christmas break, and I'm responsible, John, tonight, for my own forwarding. We'll see how that goes. There we go. So first, we have benchmarked the Index One, and as you know, this has to do with how many students passed, or the level that the students passed, and the target this year, we think, is going to be sixty. It's sort of a moving target. It may go down a little bit, but we set it at sixty, which, which might be a little high. It may, it may end up going to fifty-five, but at this point, we, we scored it at that target, and that's where the campuses fell this year. I do want to tell you that as we look at benchmark, we did have a decrease in third grade math this year across the board, third grade math. The benchmark scores were much lower than they were in the previous year. That test was much more difficult and much more rigorous this year, so we anticipated that that would happen. It is more closely aligned with, with the STAR test, but certainly, we did see a decrease in the third grade math scores across the district. The elementary benchmark for Index Four, that's our projected college readiness. Our target number for elementary is twelve. So as you know, for college readiness, the students have to score on two, at the advanced level, on two or more of the, of the exams, and that's where we sit as of right now. And then this, these were our benchmark scores for middle school. Middle school saw a little bump in their benchmark scores overall. If we compare them to the benchmark scores, scores from last year. And then there's the, there are our Index Four scores. So their target was, is thirteen. Again, a little better than what we saw this time last year in middle school. And then high school, we were able to obviously combine those. Now, the Index Four scores, I want you to keep in mind, that's only for STAR test, and for, for Index Four, for high school, there are a lot of other factors, so that specific, didn't want that to be too misleading there. That, that is only Index Four for those specific scores. It has to do with graduation rate, as you know, and a lot of other things. So the next steps for us at this point is we've already met with principals, we've talked through the benchmark scores, we've met with, the principals have met with departments, we have done data protocols with, with all of our campuses, we've divided kids into intervention. We do have a Saturday school that will be happening for our campuses to help them get to that advanced level. It's an advanced level Saturday school, not necessarily a remediation, it's to help the kids bump up to the advanced level. We are looking at priority standards on each campus, so we, we disaggregate the data according to the specific standards that that campus needs to be working on. And obviously, if we see a specific area across the district where there are problems, we know that that is something we have to look at our curriculum about and sort of see why the entire district didn't do well there. And then our campuses have already divided kids out, and we're working there. And then Benchmark Two actually starts January thirty-first for the first, for the, for the subjects that are taught, that are tested early. Writing, fourth grade writing, for example, fifth grade math and reading, so we're, those are starting soon. And then we have a focus review where we, we have, the campuses will be bringing teams so that they can begin to plan specific four-week focus reviews and to get ready for the STAR test.
Do you have any questions about the benchmark at this time?
Yeah, board members, I guess let's kind of take this one by one. If you have any questions about the data that was just presented while it's fresh on everyone's mind.
I have one request for the future. Some of the data is, is back further on, but, so progress versus standard is important. It would also be interesting to see progress compared to this point last year, just so we can see where we're going, where we're improving, where we're falling, where we've maintained status quo. I think it's buried back in here in kind of table form.
There is a comparison.
Right.
There's a comparison graph, but sure, I can be, I can do that visually next time so it's a little easier to read, sure.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that you are having Saturday school. Is it required of those students so that they can improve?
So the Saturday school that we're having, we're having a district Saturday school for, for some of the campuses, and it is for the students that we're trying to bump up to that advanced level. The principals are making individual contact with parents and, and really encouraging them to go. It's hard to require kids to come to Saturday school, obviously. The campuses are having after-school tutoring in Saturday schools and interventions for students that they're trying to bump up to the passing level. And that's, that's, those are campus programmatic decisions, and then the district is doing the Saturday school for intervene, for the advanced level students.
So is any after-school program required since this data affects our district? Are we requiring any students to remain after school and providing transportation for them?
We provide the transportation. We're providing the transportation for Saturday school, and many of the campuses are using their title money and providing transportation. We strongly encourage them. We're using every avenue we can to get them there, but as far as Reverend Mason, actually requiring them, but we do have a very, very good turnout at our after-school tutorings and our Saturday schools, both at the campus level and at the district, well, the district level one hasn't started yet, but we feel really good about it. I mean, usually, they do come.
All right, thank you.
How long are they there on Saturday?
The district level one will be three hours from nine to twelve. We'll do a large block of reading ELAR and a large block of mathematics and writing for fourth grade.
And your tests between last year and this year, harder tests?
The third grade mathematics test was more rigorous, much more rigorous.
Yeah.
Significantly more rigorous. I would not say the rest of them were that significantly different, so the, the difference that you see in the elementary scores in some of those, that, I can't say that that's a testing issue, no, sir.
In terms of the predictability, and so students or schools meeting the, the goals at this point in the year, generally a good indicator for success at the end of the year?
I wouldn't say that it's a predictor. We run the scores that way so that the campuses and, and us are able to gauge according to what the state tells us is the cutoff mark, but certainly, this time last year, we were about where we are now, and we saw tremendous growth. So, so we really see huge amounts of growth between now and STAR test. Actually, the map data is a really good predictor, a little better predictor than this, this really is about content. Do the kids know the content? And what do we need to do to help the kids learn the content? And, and how do we need to fine tune that? The map data that we're going to get back week after next is really a better projection related to how specific students will do.
So it's not uncommon, you know, and just so everybody can be on the same page, for our mid-year benchmarks to be well below...
It's common for them to be very low.
Very low, below standard, so everybody's not freaking out right now. I mean, it's pretty much expected, and due to the fact that only half of the curriculum has been kind of taught, is that the reasoning, or?
Right. Well, it's, when we take the nine-week assessment, that assessment is an assessment that really just tests content, and it does not test at the level of STAR. So this is the first STAR-like assessment that third graders for certain have taken. Many of them didn't even have the stamina to finish the test. I mean, it's a very, very difficult four-hour test for a third grader, so it's really typical for our third graders to struggle, and, and typical for other ones to struggle as well because it is the first STAR-like test that they get all year. To, to tell you that we're not, we, I mean, we obviously have a sense of urgency, but what it really does is it helps us fine tune. So, so it's really information for us so that we know how to then regroup and move forward in a real, specific way.
On the Saturday schools?
Yes, ma'am.
And do the students go to either or, or do they go either math or ELAR?
It depends on their data.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
And, and they're, just so you know, the, it's also geared specifically for the standards they don't do well in. So they, this lessons are designed for groups of kids based on the standards that they need help with. So I may not be sitting in a class with another fourth grader if I don't need that specific standard, if I've already done well on that one.
Am I to assume that the curriculum we're teaching has the same rigor as the curriculum that we're being tested over?
Yes, ma'am. The written, let me re-say that, Reverend Mason. The written curriculum that we have has the same rigor of the assessed curriculum. There's a little bit of a disconnect as far as the rigor, the instruction, and we're trying to bring that rigor up in the classroom, so that, there's a little bit of a disconnect there, but we're working on it. But the written curriculum is aligned with the assessed curriculum.
Dr. Crawford, I'm just concerned that the students who need to be in our tutorials are in the tutorials. And I know times have changed from when I was a principal and you could require students and the parents working with you and supported that. Perhaps, I, I would just hope that we are doing all that we can, doing our due diligence to secure the support of the parents, and that these students who need to be in the, in there are in there.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with you, and I think if you look at some of our campuses that have no excuses and had the recovery that they had last year, like Pete Elementary School, to where they have actually gone non-traditional on the school day, to where you had some noise about that, those are the types of opportunities and extended time with the curriculum that we can control, and not leave it up to a choice on whether or not you go to tutorials or not. So like we do with our high schools with, in the secondary schools with PLC, I appreciate the example I could Pete, to where they have broken away from the eight-to-three day that has been so traditional here in Tyler, just because that's the way we've always done it. So I appreciate the, the courage of that. So I think that's where we're going to probably see some more creativity.
So all teachers, all principals, excuse me, all campuses had an option to do that?
Absolutely. And the support from this DIAS
Yes.
of our principals to redesign their schools is what's needed, because that's not always comfortable, because, because, and it's not always comfortable within our staffs as well. So in saying that, yes, ma'am, we have flexibility. If they have a, a unique plan going forward, we will support them if it makes sense. And then as y'all look at District of Innovation later on, those are some of the things that we want to consider, to break away from some of the traditional things that doom school districts, not just us. So, so yes, ma'am, to answer your question, if, if there's a creative way to make it happen, we have the flexibility to do so, as long as we have y'all's support.
All right.
All right, any other comments before we move on?
On December two thousand and six, the legislative, or TEA actually released the calculations for our new upcoming accountability system, Domain One through Four, and this afternoon, for a brief moment, I'm going to just talk to you about the proposed calculations, and the reason I say proposed, because as you know, the legislators are still in session right now, and it is definitely possible that these things will change in the future. So Domain One, as you know, that there are five domains, and again, they've given us the calculations for the first four, and Domain One is all about student achievement. It is different than our current Index One, because in our current Index One, it was just all students that passed the test. With this Domain One, there are three components. The students who passed the test, those students who scored a final recommended in any subject, and students who scored advanced. And I have provided you here a chart so that you can see what the passing standard, again, these are projected estimates of our raw score, so the projected, if we'll look at the third grade reading, for a student who passed in third grade reading, they have to score fifty-three percent. The score final recommended, they would have to score seventy-five percent, and the score advanced, the student would also have to score an eighty-five percent. So if it's a third grade student who scored an eighty-six percent, they would be included in each one of those percentages for Domain One. It's calculated, they take the three percentages, and so here's an example. So the first percentage, the sixty-six point nine, is the students who pass, the second percent are the students who score final recommended, and the third are the students who score advanced. And they take those percentages, they add them up, and they divide by three hundred because there's a hundred possible points in each one of those percentages. And so here, with this example, there would be a thirty-eight, score of thirty-eight. The proposed targets right now, if you can look in, for instance, in an elementary school, if a campus scored a thirty-eight, they would receive a D. But if you look at a middle school campus, if a campus scored a thirty-eight, they could possibly, they would receive a C. And in the high schools, a thirty-eight would consider a D. And this, again, can change, but this is what we have now based on the fifteen, sixteen ratings. Domain Two is based on student progress. Domain Two is based on student progress. Remember, Domain One is about the achievement, and Domain Two is the progress. It is calculated, still very similar to our current Index Two. In this Domain Two, you have the all students, and there are seven potential racial or ethnic groups that can be in this category. You also have special ed and ELLs. A campus or district would have to have at least twenty-five students in each one of those categories in order for it to count. You receive one point for students who meet or exceed progress, and a campus would also receive one point for students who exceed progress. So as you can see, a meet or exceeds, that's one point, and then exceeds, and that's another point. So if a student gets exceeds progress, they will count as double for you, two points. It's calculated. Again, here's another examples of the calculations. In this example, there are six categories, the all African-American, Hispanic, white, special ed, and ELL. And they take the meet or exceeds percents, and they add it to the exceeds percents, and you have the percent score here. They divide it by twelve hundred, because there are two possible categories, and each one, again, is worth a hundred points. So it's twelve hundred. And in this example, it would be a thirty-seven percent. And based on, if this was an elementary campus, a thirty-seven percent is a D. And I just want to point out, in our current system, thirty-two was meeting standard. And now, if a campus received a thirty-two, they would actually receive an F under the new system. So it's much different than in the past. And in middle school, under the old system, if they received a thirty, it was meeting standard. But as you can see, now thirty-three is an F, or thirty-three or lower. Under Domain Three, closing the performance gaps, this is very different than the current system. Under the current system, Index Three, it was the economically disadvantaged students and one or two of the lowest subgroups. With this new Domain Three, it's only economically disadvantaged students that we're looking at here. And they have to have at least forty economically disadvantaged students in the category to meet, to be considered economically disadvantaged, and that includes all of our schools. We have at least forty students or more that are economically disadvantaged. This system is very tricky, because TEA developed a formula with Domain Three. They have a predicted score and an actual score. So they have decided, based on the percent of economically disadvantaged students either on your campus or district, they put in a formula and they give you a predicted score. Then they calculate what you actually, your actual performance. And then they subtract the actual performance from the predicted performance. So here is an example of a district. Those formulas remain the same. The only thing that changes is the percent of students that are economically disadvantaged. So in this example, this district had seventy-point-nine percent of the students that were economically disadvantaged. And it is a slope formula, so slope-intercept formula. So they take the predicted score, and here, when you put it in that formula, it was thirty-four point seven-nine, which is the predicted score. However, they take the actual score, and the actual score is taking only the economically disadvantaged students, and they add up the students who passed, who finally recommended, or who scored advanced. They divide by three to get, three hundred to get the actual score. So in this example, the actual score was a thirty-two point twenty-three, minus the predicted score, which is thirty-four point seventy-nine, so you have a negative number. So in this calculation, the district did not do as well as the state predicted it would should do.
So how? I know these principals here and these teachers' minds are boggled over this year after year. How can TEA predict what our students are going to do when the campus-level administrators and teachers are the ones working with the students? So what are they using to predict how well the students did last year?
They took the information from last year, and they developed this formula, and so it's different. So a campus that has high economically disadvantaged population is actually in their favor. They have a lower predicted score than a campus that has a lower economically disadvantaged population.
You know your stuff. I had to get you ready.
So the predicted amount, does that approximate the gains they expected students to make?
Yes.
Okay. And so that is the same across the state in terms of the standard of the gain if they're an economically disadvantaged student?
It's only the same based on their percent of economically disadvantaged. So another district that has seventy-point-nine percent economically disadvantaged, then that predicted score will be the same. But a campus that has, like, for instance, some of our campuses have over ninety percent economically disadvantaged score, that predicted number actually will be lower for them.
Okay. So the state has somehow figured out how well poor kids are supposed to do, and based off of the number of kids on a campus, they think they're supposed to make a certain amount of progress.
Right.
And then we have the actual amount of progress, again, somehow measured.
Yes.
And we fell short of that?
But this is just an example, right. And in this example, there's a negative number. So if you look here at the targets in elementary, middle, high, and a district, if you score below what the state predicts you to score, the highest rate, grade you can receive is a C. So the goal is to either break even or come positive. You have to score better than what the state predicts you to score, based on the percent of students that are economically disadvantaged. In Domain Four, which is the post-secondary readiness, right now, and again, they're still meeting, and there probably will be some other criterias. But right now, the only thing that's in this domain for elementary schools are attendance, is attendance. And middle school is attendance and dropout rate. And then I'll talk about high school and districts. It looks a little different. So they have the ten subgroups again, and you have to have a minimum of twenty-five in each group to count. And under this new system, they're calculating a chronic absenteeism rate. So what they do, they take the percent of students, because they do realize that we have students who are very mobile, and the students have to, in order for them to count in the attendance rate, they have to be enrolled at that campus eighty-three percent or more of the school year. And then they take the chronic absenteeism, and chronic absenteeism is a percent, and it's the students who are counted in this calculation, they have to, if they're out of school ten percent or more of the school year, they're considered chronic absentee, chronic absentees.
Are we talking with the parents and making sure the parents understand the importance of them getting their children to school?
Absolutely. This was the first, well, under this new system, which of course will be implemented in 2018. This is the first year that we've actually had attendance in our system. Of course, we look at attendance each six weeks, but now, because we want to make sure that we're ahead of the game, we've already given the principals up until this first semester, who are your students who are being considered chronically absent, and we're on that. And working, of course, with Student Services, Mr. Sanchez and his department are working diligently with the principals to make sure parents know. Because at this point, if they're absent at least nine days, they're considered chronically absent. But for the school year, it's eighteen. So we can stop, as we could say, stop the bleeding right now. If a student has nine, as long as they don't go over the eighteen-day threshold, they would not be considered chronically absent.
We identified attendance last year at this time that it was going to be a big player in Domain Four.
Yes.
Because I sat on a committee at TEA, and that's all I kept hearing. So places like Dogon and Bolt, or Hubbard and Birdwill have really, and I'm not, I can't list all of you, but they've really done a great job on setting the standard in regard to that. Now, I'll say this, that it didn't always show up in those A-through-F ratings, the preliminary ratings that we received, because it talks about the attendance rate of your most chronic. It does not reward you for your attendance rate. It's a tough deal. No doubt about it.
So a student who is not on a campus at least eighty-three percent of the time, or enrolled on that campus, but is enrolled in the district more than eighty-three percent of the time, do they count in the district rankings or the district ratings but not the campus rating?
Right now, what we know from the state, that district attendance is not going to be included in Domain Four. It's only elementary and middle schools. So no, they would not.
Our Domain Four, right now, on the preliminary, is attached to the high schools, essentially.
And that's, that's the next piece, yes, sir, that I was going to talk about. There are three, and right now, again, it's proposed, the graduation rate, and this is for the district and high school, and your graduates who complete at least one of the following, that's completing a CTE coherent sequence of courses. They have to complete twelve or more hours of post-secondary readiness, and perform at or above the criteria score under A, B, I, B courses, meet the TSI benchmark, or SAT, or ACT, and enlist in the armed forces and the graduation plan rate for high schools and districts. So Domain Five, we do not have-
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we emphasizing at the middle school level, before these students enter high school, the graduation plan?
Yes.
Emphasizing that they go to that plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Right now, we don't have, of course, any information on Domain Five, or how it's going to be calculated. We did not receive a predicted grade. But I just wanted to let you know that there are eight categories right now. The Fine Arts, Secondary Language, Second Language Acquisition, Wellness and Physical Education, Digital Learning, Community and Parental Environment, Dropout Prevention Strategies, Twenty-First Century Development Programs, of course, the educational programs for the GT. And so what we've been told at this time, and again, it could change, is that by the summer of 2017, district and campuses will get to choose three of the eight domains for the Domain Five rating, and they will get to submit. So a campus could choose three domains that are, three categories that are different than the district. But once you choose those three, you're locked into those, and then they'll tell us the rubric that will be measured on for Domain Five. So we have to choose carefully. And so last, right now, just how it's going to all be calculated to get that hundred percent, we've been told that, of course, Domain One and Two is the student achievement or student progress, that they would take the best of the two. And that would be rated thirty-five percent. Domain Three is the closing performance gap, and of course, that's the economically disadvantaged students, and that's twenty percent. Domain Four is the post-secondary readiness, and that's at thirty-five percent. And Domain Five is ten percent. And we would get a letter grade in each one of those domains, and then an overall grade. Any additional questions?
Yes. Does the teachers understand all of this that you just went over?
We have given them a briefing of it, but not as in detail, because again, until we have final word from the legislation that this is what it's going to be, we have not inundated with them, because we're trying to keep them focused on the current accountability system right now. We have, of course, briefed the principals and assistant principals, but until this becomes a little bit more final, we've just given the teachers a brief overview. Because it is very different than what we're currently operating under.
Yes, it sure is.
I'm just glad I got to use that high school algebra finally. Y equals mx plus b. I love that, yeah. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Well, we thought about creating a little quiz for the community members out there after that presentation, so that, you know, the purpose of this is that y'all all know what an A is, and y'all know what a B is, and a C, and a D, and a, and an F, if we get there. And it's going to be a little bit more complicated than that, and there's a lot of tweaking and fine tuning that's going to happen before next year. It is an imperfect system. We're going to embrace it. We're going to try the best that we possibly can. We're not going to fight it. We're not going to look at a Cameron Point and say, we're, you know, we're doing all that. We've got enough of those superintendents out there doing that. But we do want to make this public, because it is not as simple as A-through-F, as you can tell. So that's our statement, and we're sticking to it, and hope that we can achieve great things in this new accountability system.
Just one other comment. It's ironic that the folks who would say to change the rules after the contest is fought are the same ones who've done that to public schools. And that we had an accountability system that told us how we did last year, and now we have a new set of rules that tell us how we did last year, and guess what? They're different. I hope, as you lead the district and with the principals here, that they understand that we're pointed in the right direction, focused on improving, and that this is not any more demoralizing for them than it needs to be. That this is, it's, some of this is useful information. It helps us understand what the rules are that are always changing. And your public comments and your private comments have been focused on meeting whatever the standards are that have been set, which I think is the right approach that other district leaders across our state should follow. But at the same time, I know if I had been evaluated on a completely different standard, retroactively, that would be very demoralizing to me. And so I hope that our teachers and principals understand that, from this dius, that we appreciate and value the hard work it's taken to move this district forward, to continue to move this district forward, and that we'll get past this A-through-F historical look back here and just focus on the future.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Reverend Hager. We want our teachers to provide good instruction in the classroom. To inundate them with this, I don't think would be fair. Ms. Washington, you asked that question about the teacher's understanding. Our principals are intelligent enough to figure out the game, because they did it as challenged two, two years ago, when we focused on the movie Moneyball, or the book, but watch the movie. And starting to understand that we can be successful attacking it in that way. But the best thing that a teacher can do is provide great instruction in the classroom for our students. You know, and so I think that's the way to do that, is to understand that that's what's their job, their duty. And the principal's job is to figure out the game that we have to play within and to win inside that game. So, thank you for saying that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a report on Lone Star Governance.
Okay. I don't have a PowerPoint, but the board, you have with you a communique for the board quarterly progress tracker for the months of November, December, and January. You can use the, the last few board meetings to gauge your thoughts and your feelings. I need those reported back to me so that I can compile those and report those back to the public at future board meetings for y'all to actually take action on. You also have future action required, the proposed vision statement that you worked on in a workshop, goals and targets with goal progress measures, and ideas for superintendent constraints. I also left some gaps in there for board constraints, if you want to attack those, that we'll need to work on in future workshops and meetings as well. The vision statement and the goals/targets with the goal progress measures, we'll have a first reading with the intention for policy inclusion at the February ninth workshop, and then action to actually adopt those on February twentieth. Just so the public knows, and so that, and then we can go over what kind of what's in that packet briefly on the goals. We're proposing Goal One, after working with the board in a workshop, as targeting literacy and reading achievement. Having, at the end of third grade by twenty-twenty-one, all of our eighty, or eighty-five percent of our third graders on level, using RIT scores, and we have GPMs in there. We also have the college readiness sixty by thirty that focuses on consider, the students that are considered college and career-ready, that the increase will go from fifty-five point eight percent in 2016 to eighty-five percent in the spring of twenty-one. And then we also have goal progress measures in there about AP exams, and students achieving three or better on those. And then completion of two or more advanced dual-credit courses increased six percent annually in the spring of 2016 to thirty-eight point eight percent from this last spring to fifty point eight percent in 2019. And then the last goal, Goal Three, Career Technology Education, the number of graduates completing a CTE coherent sequence of courses increased ten percent annually. We think that we can score on that, up twenty-nine point four percent in the spring of 2016 to sixty-nine point four percent in the spring of 2021. And we might have some calibration on some of these numbers and these targets for y'all as we go forward. A lot of this is designed, these targets and these goals, to take care of a few things, especially the back two. Those back two goals are really designed to attack Domain Four in the new accountability system. So I think it's wise to be prescriptive and strategic on what we're, what we're expecting from administration. So that's in your packet?
Is there a plan, Dr. Crawford, in place to increase the number of students taking AP? I think it said AP and IB and something.
Yeah, and, or dual-credit.
Dual-credit.
So any advance, that was one of our targets, and one of our goals that's recommended there, is to do so. Mr. Browns, our executive director of College and Career, has got great plans. He's really worked well, I think, with both high schools to increase that, for both, that opportunity for both high schools.
We need to.
Absolutely. And I cannot say again how much of a proponent I am of dual-credit and the junior- And I cannot say again how much of a proponent I am of dual credit and the junior college. Uh, I have personal experience with that. I think it's a great path to go. It's not only good for the po- you know, your wallet as a parent, but it's great for students that they can grab so many college credits before they actually enter college when they're not always socially or psychologically ready. We've got early, early college high school. We've, we've got to expand our dual credit offerings and, and, and achievement enrollment at the high schools and completion. Um, our staff knows that, and then we have to score three or better on our AP tests. Um, we've gotta get better at that. Uh, Mr. Jones, I'm looking at him, and Mr. Sanchez, and Mr. Brown. Uh, that, those are some things that we have to get better at, and we can. We, our population can achieve that.
Dr. Crawford, looking at, um, under Goal Two and Three, the, uh, goal progress measure, are those, uh, competitive in that? So as a parent, looking at choice sheets that come home, and my kids have certain number of classes they can take after they do athletics, whatever, and fitting in AP classes and these technical certifications or those CTC courses, I mean, do we reach a point where it's impossible to hit some of these numbers because there's not enough classes in the day for a kid to take?
Or that the state requirements sometimes conflict with those that might be aggressively college-going, yes. But we've got enough size, enough scale, that that probably won't hurt us.
Okay.
Very rarely will you have someone who is super aggressive, taking all AP courses. Um, they can still, you know, have graduate with endorsement through a pathway, but as far as the CTE goes, they're gonna, we're gonna have to get really creative on meeting their needs. Um, for those that are just maybe in it to maybe get a credential or two for post-secondary credentialing, as far as workforce credentialing goes, it's a great opportunity that we've gotta get better at and, and more strategic whenever we're doing those selections. And we're getting better, but we, but those targets are attainable, um, because our region is attaining those.
Okay.
And, and we're, we're behind our region. That, that, the data that I looked at today, just to, to clarify that, I think on our, uh, on our coherent sequence of courses, we're at 29.4%. I think the region's at 60%. And so, see, we're not that far behind in other areas, but that one, we're really far behind, and it's because I don't think we've been as prescriptive in doing that. Our counseling department is really engaged about this now. I don't think that we were doing that quite as much in the past, especially with the CT Center. That resource that the, that the community provided us in such a benevolent way is really gonna pay dividends for us to, to grab those credentials and that coherent sequence of courses.
All right, if there's no other comments, we will move on to Roman numeral thirteen. No, uh, we're gonna pull out item B. Is there any others that you or any board members wanted to pull out? All right. If not, I'll take a motion on items A, C, D, E, and F.
I move that we approve those items.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. I've got gifts and donations, item B.
Yeah, it's great to, um, recognize a couple of philanthropic organizations, either parent-led or community-led, and tonight we have $6,800 being presented to the district on behalf of the Robert E. Lee Dugout Club, to the Robert E. Lee baseball team. Thank them for that. And then we also have a big check presentation tonight from the Tyler ISD Foundation for grants for great ideas for various TISD campuses in the amount of $23,745. They are here tonight-
All right.
-for a photo op.
Right.
We're happy to oblige that.
All right, let's, uh, let's get a motion on the 6,800 Oriole Dugout Club.
I move that we accept that gift.
All right, second?
Second motion.
All right, any comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have the, uh, $23,745 Tyler ISD Foundation, if we can get a motion to accept that grant.
I move that we accept the gift from Ta- uh, the foundation.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
Yes, we are always appreciative of the leadership of the Tyler ISD Foundation. I have to be even more specific and say of Tab Beal. Tab is one who is always eager to do whatever he can in the community, all around the city of Tyler, I will say as well. And just thank you for your leadership, Tab, and all that you continue to do, you and those who work with you.
Amen.
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 All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is approved. Photo op?
If we could have a couple of board members down to maybe take a picture, I don't know if all of you wanna go, you can. Go ahead, there you go.
It's a big check, we can all have it.
Big check for a big picture.
All right, that concludes Roman numeral thirteen. We move on to curriculum instruction consent agenda. Item B, I assume?
Yes, item, item B and item A.
And A? All right. Anybody need item C, Paul?
Yes, actually.
Okay. Well, let's, let's get on it. Item A.
All right, item A is on page 39 of your packet. And as we go through the year, y'all know we start the year off in tightly, um, staffing our schools with a 22 to 1 teacher, or excuse me, student to teacher ratio. Uh, we apply for the waivers as needed. Um, if we ha- if we tip over any of those situations to where we cannot find a teacher, we provide an instructional aide in those situations. As you go through the year, certainly these, there's some fluctuation there, and schools' grade levels sometimes fall off of a need for that waiver. Or like at Christmas break, you wind up having folks move in to a district because the holidays are a good time to move. Uh, for instance, at Jack, I think we were plus four. It indicates that it's a new class size waiver in that kindergarten, in those kindergarten grade levels. And so the choice there would be to actually consider hiring a new teacher and busting up some of the classes that are already there, and then creating a new class, or applying for a waiver at Christmas ti- or at post-Christmas moves and providing some additional support there. Um, so that's one of the reasons that we, we cringe whenever we have to do these types of things, because, and while we want our 22 to 1 class size to be what it is, we also think, uh, employing a brand-new teacher at break, uh, to expose 15 students to for the first time, um, that the parents are very receptive of that. So, here we have, uh, the, the waivers that we're actually asking for, and that is at Bonner, uh, one, one waiver. Uh, that's a new class size waiver at Bonner for first grade, uh, in one classroom. At Jack, it's, uh, is that four classrooms that we're asking for?
Six classrooms.
Six class total. Four additional. Um, Owens actually has two additional, is that two additional, Dr. Hanson? In second grade. So, unless y'all would like us to start breaking up those classes that they've been with since August, um, this is, this is the best we can do right now. Uh, again, we're tightly staffed district-wide. 22 to 1's been a huge, uh, effort for us the last two years, and I think we've been fairly successful. And we hate bringing this to y'all, but we have no other option.
Just a question, so Dixie is down with a zero under first grade. Is that a previous waiver requested that now has fallen beneath the waiver size and now doesn't need a waiver? Is that what that means?
That's, that's correct. That's fallen off.
Okay.
And these are classrooms, not students, right?
Students are on the right.
On the right.
The amount of students is over on it. So we had seven actually move into Jack.
All right, the other factor, I don't think you mentioned there is just the difficulty of finding the highest quality teachers mid-year. That would also be a constraint if, if we did tell you that we wanted to break up classes, which I don't think we do, but it's always challenging to find high-quality teachers mid-year.
Yeah, now, we had some resignations or retirements at semester, and we certainly go out and search for those right then, but, and, you know, those are limited. And we, we struggle to find quality teachers at mid-year, because those mid-year graduates are pretty, pretty rare, um, especially if you're trying to cash your net outside of the higher-end offerings here in Smith County, uh, which we do a lot of, we have a lot of success in, in bringing in teachers from the urban areas to come here over the summer, but that's not typically a time where you can find, uh, quality or quantity, uh, to be honest with you.
Well, we, you know, obviously don't, don't always prefer it, but, you know, given that it's the, probably the best scenario, you know, for you guys to go this route. I mean, I can remember when these waivers were a lot more and greater a few years ago, so, you know, we all want 22 to 1, but there's not always, uh, a lot of good options when it's mid-year like this, so.
It's imperfect. Um, I, I remember the first week of my employment here in 2014, we were upwards of 50 to mid-50s, I guess, on waivers we were requesting. So, we're making progress. Uh, our commitment is to try to get there at the very first of the year, and then it's a good problem to have if we have students that are moving into Tyler ISD midterm.
Also seems that the, if we look at these additions, these also are in the areas the demographer suggested we were going to have elementary capacity issues coming up in the future as well, that west and southwest Tyler quadrant.
Yes, sir, Dixie is fairly, uh, well-enrolled, um, but they're projected as well, and so theirs fell off, and then Jack and Owens, that southern quadrant, does have some projections there that, that, uh, have some capacity concerns, concerns that administration and board are gonna have to deal with in the near future.
All right, board members, any other questions? If not, we'll take a motion on the class size waiver exemption.
I move that we approve the administration's recommendation, uh, for the request for class size waivers as stipulated.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Move on to, uh, our desig- possible designation as District of Innovation.
Yes, sir, this, uh, action item for approval of a lev- of a resolution for District of Innovation is now brought before the board. Um, we did play, uh, put together an informal committee made up of parents, community members, and staff, a variety of staff, to see what their interest could possibly be in regard to some of the things that are, um, afforded to a school district if they become a District of Innovation. Things like education, educator certification for high-needs areas. Um, that's not saying to not get a certified teacher, uh, under state law, but, but it might be one to where, uh, if a teacher is certified in 912 mathematics, they could actually be certified to go teach at the middle school in mathematics. Uh, currently, there's some state law that's not available for that. Um, myself, before all these regulations came forward, I was certified to teach history, and yet I taught government, taught about two or three classes outside of that. Well, they've done away with that ability, they're trying to give us the affordability to go back to do that. Um, contracts, uh, without getting too deep in the weeds on chapter 21, contracts with the, with, uh, teachers or principals. Currently, the state law says that if you've worked five out of eight years, um, consecutive eight years, five, five of those years, then after a one-year engagement period, you have to get married almost forever, um, if, if you wanna keep that teacher. What we could possibly propose is that new hires, okay, let's be clear about that, new hires coming in the district, we may wind up coming up with a three-year probationary period for those five out of eights. In other words, to extend the engagement, the courtship, uh, before we actually enter into that marriage, uh, might be something that we actually bring in front of the board. Calendar flexibility. Uh, we've heard from our community about start and end date, uh, with our calendars. Um, there's a potential, we'll talk about here, that in a minute, that not this next calendar, but the year after, you could see us actually out before Memorial Day, which people have been clamoring for, for a long time, for some reason. Not promising anything there, but we know that if we actually tried to start earlier this year, it's a $700,000 hit on this year's budget. We won't be recommending that. I think your CFO over there would probably not be too happy with us if we did that. And then the length of the school day. Um, there are some waivers that are going to expire, that are no longer going to be available for school districts, uh, in regard to minutes, and we're really thinking about rise, uh, that, that, as far as being able to count students, uh, for full-day enrollment whenever they actually are there for, uh, a shortened amount of time, that, those are going away. And you have to tack these through the, through the minutes as opposed to actually the waivers. So, they're trying to, they're trying to lean up at the agency and not have to deal with all of these waivers and give the local school board the flexibility to actually be the, the control board of what's going on here. 22 to 1 class sizes is also something that, that is on here, uh, that we could potentially look at. Y'all have made it important here locally, so instead of having TEA as the regulator, y'all are the, the final say. Uh, so I think that's something that might, might also come by there. Um, listed here, and up here on the board, you have the actual timeline of the process, and I won't read all of that. If you have your reading glasses on, maybe you can read that, but it is online, I guess. Uh, it will be posted online. But basically, January 2017, the Board of Trustees adopts a resolution. There's a lot of interaction in there as far as committee work goes and bringing plans back to the board, formally posting it online, public hearings, uh, development of the innovation plan, uh, another public meeting for final ver- version, and then in June or July of 2017, later on this year, the Board of Trustees adopts the plan with a two-thirds majority vote. So it's a pretty extensive process over many months. We've asked, uh, community members to actually be a part of it. Some of y'all are in the audience, and we appreciate, uh, y'all willing to do so.
Who are they, Dr. Crawford?
I believe Mr. Buckner, uh, is, is asked to be a part of the District of Innovation, uh, along with some others. So we've got some PTA representatives. Uh, we, we, we shot for diversity on this one to, to really do it right. So, in saying that, uh, it truly needs to be a, a community-wide effort on this District of Innovation.
All right, thank you. Any, uh, comments, questions?
Just one question, so the implementation, um, at the bottom of this timeline, July 2017, we vote on, uh, a plan. Is there any required TEA action, or is the plan assumed to be approved, or what, what happens after that?
With the board action, uh, i- if approved, that is communicated to the Commissioner of Education. They file it, and you're listed as a District of Innovation. You go forward.
So they don't evaluate our plan? There's no conditions set on it? It's just if we approve it, then we're implementing immediately?
That's correct. The great thing about them trying to free themselves up some, from some of the bureaucracy is to have these, I guess, these checkpoints in here with your community, with your, your committee. And then the local school board actually is the one that is the gatekeeper on these things as opposed to the agency.
Dr. Crawford, are the meetings, are the dates that you have here on the possible timeline, are those some that are set out in the procedures that the state gives us? For, it says we have to meet certain, certain procedures.
Yeah, and you can see some of that. Some of that is, let's just say where it says Board of Trustees. Those are some things that, that certainly have to be done within a certain amount of time. Or at least that's where we can fit it in. And then like in March and April of 2017, it says District of Innovation Committee creates the innovation plan, so it'll take us, you know, two months to actually put that plan together. After the public hearing and the, and the board formally decided to pursue it. Right now, you're just adopting a resolution to tell us to go forward.
The board's involvement during this process. Are we involved? Are we in meetings when it's put together, or is it just presented to us on one of these dates? How does that?
You know, I, I think that, you know, other than a quorum, I don't have any issue of, of y'all being in attendance as ex officio or actually part of it. Maybe as a signed trustee or two. But as far as the entire board, you can do whatever you want to do, as long as we have the Meet the Texas Open Meetings Act appropriately if we're working on district business. So if a quorum wants to be there, we would certainly have to post that. However, if one or two of you would like to attend from time to time, absolutely, you're welcome to do so. It's, it's pretty much a community meeting, I mean, a community committee, so.
And the plan will consist of just the specific provisions that we would like relief from, if I remember correctly?
Correct. Which you can always go back and revisit these if the statute is still in place after this session. I think if you get it in, get the process begun before any new law takes effect, you would still maintain that status. But it would have to still be in statute saying that you can go back and adjust these down the road. So there's a lot of school districts that are on the same schedule that we're on.
So that's something we would monitor. If this legislation goes away in the current session, session ends at the end of May, that's about the time we're, the next month is when we're voting on it. So we would, we can make an informed decision about the likelihood that this program would continue based off the legislation.
The lifespan, but you would, you know, I, I think, from what I've heard, if it does, if you get in now and you adopt it, that they would not take away the local decision of what y'all have done with that. And I haven't heard much yet in regard to that for, for legislation. I think they've got some other things on their mind down there other than taking away District of Innovation, even outside of public ed.
So the, so the the notation is a District of Innovation. But are you limited to the district? What I'm thinking of is an effort of being innovative and also speaking hypothetically is if you, say you have a middle school that you want to do something really creative with, can you just do something different there? And as, with regard to the calendar or the
Oh, yeah.
days or whatever?
Absolutely. Yep. If you want to go to year-round school?
Right.
Now, there's some things you have to work out with the agency on that, but that doesn't, that doesn't really tie into the District of Innovation. You know, you're looking at more statutory restrictions that have been burdensome, not just for the school district, but for the agency in managing as well.
Well, anything we can do to loosen the constraints of the state and act more, you know, in a more flexible manner around here to do what's best for the students of Tyler. You know, that's who we're out, looking out for. I'm, I'm excited to hear about those possibilities. And if this is a, a course that we can do that with, I look forward to giving it a closer look and going down that path.
You know, this has also spurred some conversation with our local representative, Matt Schaefer, in regard to talking about teacher certifications in general. You know, it's, it's almost ludicrous, ludicrous to think that someone who might have gone to UT Dallas that has an engineering degree can't teach physics for us just because he didn't go to teacher school. So, you know, I think we can all agree that, that sometimes certifications and credentialing don't mean much. A lot of times they do, but in some cases, in those very hard-to-staff areas of teaching, I think that's something that we're gonna need to consider if, if it's, if the, if the reins are loosened a little bit there. Not every time. I would, it'd be hard for me to say that we need an elementary teacher that hadn't gone to teacher school teaching. But some of those upper-level courses, AP courses, where we have a hard time finding some, that might be somewhere where we can make, make headway.
Some of my favorite college professors were those who came from the business world and ended up somehow in academia. But you, it was always a better lesson. They had so much more to offer. You know, they knew where you were going, where you wanted to go.
And, and we've got some, you know, I know we've got one rock star out-of-state teacher at one of our campuses that got certified in a different state and has had a hard time obtaining his teacher certification here in Texas just for some reason. But we continue to find creative ways for him to, to stick around. And he's actually teaching at a campus that we had a great turnaround at last year. So, there are some instances to where there's some statutory requirements that get in the way of us finding great teachers.
Does certification limit our teacher supply in the CTC courses?
You know, thanks to Matt Schaefer and the, and the bill that he got passed the last session, that's becoming less and less of a barrier. You know, last year, we had someone driving in over at the CT Center for Paint and Body? Yeah, Paint and Body over there that was driving into the Metroplex that was teaching at the Richland Junior College on the east side there in Mesquite, that was credentialed but not certified. And it was approved because of that Career Technology Education statute that says that you can actually go find those industry-related professionals to teach your courses.
I'm glad Mr. Burkfield asked a question because I think it's important that if the board is gonna have oversight over this, and I keep seeing the board, the board, the board, that we would be present in some of these meetings for the knowledge base.
They will let you know when those meetings occur? And if you'd like to attend those, that's great, or y'all could actually embed someone in that meeting if you choose to, if you'd like to. It's your District of Innovation plan. Reverend Mason, would you like us to consider your membership on that?
We'll, we'll, we'll have a board discussion.
All right, guys, let's get a motion on this.
I move that we approve the resolution for, to consider designation as a District of Innovation.
All right, second?
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move forward with it. Got one more item here to discuss. Senecor? Senecor?
Senecor Foundation for Drug and Alcohol Counseling is a, is a state grant-funded program for drug and alcohol counseling to be placed at alternative education sites. Ken Vaughn actually started us with a relationship with Senecor before he departed us. And we think it's a good enough program. They, they provide a licensed professional counselor focusing on drug and alcohol abuse at our site, at no cost to us. The only thing we have to provide is certainly the access to students and, and parents as well, if they choose. Again, it's a choice as, as well as a location, so an office. So they would be actually housed at, at the old Pete DAP location. Again, it's state-funded, it's grant-funded, and if, you know, if they don't get, continue to receive their grant, it would go away. So, at no cost to the district, the recommendation here is that we actually entered an agreement with Senecor.
So my question was, A, the cost of the district, which there is none, and B, no cost to the families either? And then, C, so are there multiple providers that have this state contract, or is this the only one, or do you know?
Yes, and we had those listed at one time on this agenda item. Fort Bend ISD, I believe, is one that also has Senecor. Excuse me? Houston IS, Houston ISD? Houston ISD. And then they've got a couple of others that are going in front, I can't recall which ones they're going in front of this month. But there's a couple of other ISDs as well.
Those were the only questions I had.
I think there's something else to ask. Rolly's up here.
I appreciate y'all, uh, Mr. Sanchez made an appearance. He got on camera tonight.
Almost feel like Elvis, Prince. Good, good evening, board. We appreciate the opportunity to bring, what an opportunity this is for students of Tyler ISD. We want to make sure that we look at, this is just not a, an opportunity to deal with kids today, but we know that sometimes alcohol and drug abuse extends into the family. So as part of Senecor, we will extend it into the family and provide them an opportunity to have counseling sessions with not only themselves, but with their children. And so we can open that dialogue between parents and children about the dependencies sometimes they have with drug and alcohol. So we're trying to make sure we take care of the whole child in when we do things at Tyler ISD. So this is an opportunity to do that.
This would take effect when, if we approve it tonight?
Immediately.
Immediately.
After it's signed by our board president.
Well, this, this will be on the campus where you are, Ms. Joyce? And you're supportive?
All right, let's get a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the administration's recommendation for the agreement with Senecor Foundation for Drug and Alcohol Counseling for our students at DAEP.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Thank you, Rolly, for putting your serious face on for one minute. All right, no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries as well. We've got a few items on, uh, what, financial items on here?
Yes, the quarterly financial executive summary. If you have anything you'd like to ask Mrs. Bjork, now would be the time to do so. There's, from my understanding, there's not as much to report about on this as far as your investments. And the executive summary is done per statute for the board.
All right.
I had one question.
It's gonna mess up our ratio.
The, I can't tell which page it is. It's on the Health Insurance Fund. Essentially, we're upside down. Revenues less than expenditures by 551,000. There's not a budget listed for this item, so I just wanted to get a sense for whether or not this number is kind of where it should be. It's a big negative number, and so I just want to see if this is a problem, or is this something that's to be expected?
It varies from month to month. And a lot of times after school starts, a lot of the old lines start coming in. So it's usually heavy at the start of school, the lines are bad. And then it'll settle down. And so, it's hard to tell, but you don't have to worry. But we have
Okay.
So you're saying you're not worried about it?
She said not yet.
Was it two years ago that we got hit, or three years ago that we got hit with a, it was two years ago where we got hit with some catastrophic-type stuff or very Yeah. So that sometimes, I think, hits you, from what I understand. Tasha is an expert on that. But it's, I guess, similar to what it was two years ago. Last year, we had a good year. Didn't have a lot of that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on the superintendent's staff reports? Okay. Then we will move on to the district calendar, first reading.
Well, these are always fun for me. Just like weather days, making a decision on whether or not to have school or not. You know, I've got a friend that, that's now come back to the state in the superintendent at another district that left a state. And I don't think they had gotten a calendar adopted for three years. It was always unadopted. So these things can be really controversial, but we didn't really have much flexibility in this calendar this year. And we did have a committee that looked at it, made up of staff and, and parents, along with other community members. Let me just take you through some of the highlights. That's the best way to do it. August, obviously, is the traditional start date of the last Monday in August. As you'll recall, this last year, we actually started, we had a couple of workdays on that Monday and Tuesday and started on that Wednesday. But if we were to do that in this calendar, it would push us deep into June, or deeper into June. Parents that were on the committee and the staff that was on the community really did not want to look at a, that, that third week of June, or not third week, but the middle of June going that deep. And so, the start date is August 28th with Labor Day on the 4th. As you go into October, you have a Professional Development Day on the 9th, along with state testing days. We did propose to those on the committee, what does your Thanksgiving need to look like? They're overwhelmingly, they stated, those on the committee stated, a week at Thanksgiving. And again, once you go to that, you don't ever go back. And so in saying that, we kind of stayed away from trying to be creative with some of those days in Thanksgiving. Thanks to Mr. Jones running that committee. We tried to put our most amenable, sensitive guy in charge of that committee. He did a good job. However, Christmas does look different. As you can see, instead of taking the entire week off before Christmas, the committee is proposing, unless y'all do something different, to actually go to school those three days prior, where secondary schools can actually have finals on those three days. Elementary schools can wind down appropriately. What causes the difficulty on these calendars as far as the breaks go is when Christmas is located. And it's on a Monday. This last year was on a Sunday. And so we were able to take off the day after, the 1st, to kind of get our sea legs back underneath us. However, this time, that's not gonna be possible. We had 10 days off this year. It's proposed at Christmas to have nine days off. The 1st is on a Monday. The proposal is for, to be off on Tuesday and then actually return that Wednesday. So instead of having the, 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 the three-day week at the front of the year, the, the three-day week's kind of at the middle of the year, that was kind of a compromise. February has no, uh, excuse me, Martin Luther King Day on the 15th. I want to make sure I get that in. February has no days off. And speaking of that, I do want to make a statement here that we recognize in Tyler ISD that Valentine's Day and Halloween are not holidays. And so we would prefer that our kids come to school that day and that our staff comes to school that day. Okay, there you go. There you go.
All the ghosts in the audience.
I'm looking at y'all, chiefs. No, y'all came to work. Y'all come to work. I'm talking about the other things I said. Spring break is a full week off. It lines up with where we need it as far as it landing for state testing purposes. As always, we're very cognizant of that. It does happen to be in the middle week of March. Sometimes we've seen it in the, almost up towards the front, like the second week of March. So, about two and a half weeks into March, we actually have spring break.
It's when TJC is with us.
It's when TJC has their spring break, so our dual-credit stuff lines up well with that. April, there's no days off in April. I'm going to go back, excuse me. Good Friday is an official holiday in Tyler ISD.
All right, all right.
We don't try to hide a weather day there because it always comes down to, hey, soup, you going to take that weather day or not? It's Good Friday, we got to take Good Friday off. So, we slayed that dragon and said, Good Friday's going to be a holiday. April, we're going to school entire April, all of April, most of May with Memorial Day, the 28th, and the end of school being on June 1st. So, you'd actually come back for four days to take finals after your Memorial Day weekend. One thing we obviously on here is not, the grading period cuts aren't on here yet because it's not adopted. We'll put those in when adopted. We ended the semester this year at Christmas. The concerns on that are for half, those half courses at the high school level, those semester courses at the high school level, they don't feel like they can fit in all of their curriculum and be equitable per semester if you put less days in that first semester. However, if you'll go and see how much testing is in the spring season, those usually balance out or get close to bouncing out. We're also looking at actually conducting commencement exercises if we can make the finance work and the minutes, appropriate instructional minutes work as opposed to being after the school year's out. In other words, if the seniors can get finished earlier, we're going to look at that innovation because it's to our benefit on the high school campuses for that to happen as a former high school principal. And there are plenty of school districts, I think Longview does something like two weeks prior to school being held. That's the calendar. It's the first reading. There was not a lot of flexibility or creativity in this one because of where Christmas lands, to be honest with you, and because of when the start date is, the last Monday in August and then Christmas being on an actual Monday.
So, as proposed, you think you'll be able to have a semester break at the Christmas break? You think you'll be able to do that again?
We'll get some feedback. You know, we'll talk to staff and maybe do some, we might put a small three-question survey out for parents and staff to answer just to kind of see what that looks like. You know, the elementary schools, they don't have much other than, I guess, report card, reporting of report cards. There's not much involvement there. It's really on the instruction and the curriculum, and that usually affects secondary schools. So, I know as a parent, I like it that way as opposed to coming back and taking final exams two weeks later. I think my kid takes, he vegges out during the Christmas break and is in no shape to come back and take finals right when they come back.
Right.
That's good.
All right, we'll see that again once or twice more, and if you've thought of anything, you'll have another chance to comment on it. We have a few meetings coming up in February. You want to tell us about those?
Right now, we have a board workshop scheduled for February 9th. We'll send an email out to the board just to see what your thoughts are on your availability for actually having a workshop as normal during the day, and then the possibility of a special call meeting that evening for public comments about a possible construction program, and then B, a special meeting on February 13th if the board decides they would like to call such. The date, the deadline on that is February 17th to be called. The regular meeting being February 20th, and then May 6th of this year is the school trustee election for single-member districts 2 and 4. Hate to do a two-meeting day to y'all, but we've got some governance work to do that...
We're going to do the Lone Star Governance for the most part of that workshop.
That workshop, yes, sir.
Yeah.
It's the stuff that's in your packet tonight.
That we want to do before we forget what we're doing.
Mr. President and to this superintendent and board, I will be filing for reelection for District 2, so I thought I'd make that announcement.
All right. Thank you, and Dr. Nation.
Thank you, Reverend Mason.
Yes, and I've decided to seek reelection as well.
Places 2 and 4 are open.
Yes, it.
Thank both of you for your commitment to serving this community, putting your name out there to do it. All right, at this time, we have finished our business for today. We appreciate all of you for coming, those of you for sticking with us till 9 o'clock. I apologize for that. Sometimes these things take a little time, so with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.